Good evening and welcome to the work session for the Newton County Board of Education. This is March 10th. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, special recognition. I think we have special recognitions tonight.
Yes, Madam Chair, we do. This evening, we have several students in attendance who deserve to be publicly recognized for their recent outstanding accomplishments, from winning the state fire safety calendar poster contest, to regional math competitions, and literacy day events. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate from our school board chairwoman, Mrs. Shaquilla Henderson Baker. First, we'll start with two students who won top awards in the Fire Safety Tips Calendar Poster Contest sponsored by the Georgia Insurance and Safety Fire Commission Commissioner and the Georgia Fire Sprinkler Association. Children from across the state were invited to submit artwork reflecting specific fire safety themes, and two students from Heard-Mixon Elementary School won top awards in the contest. First, would Chase Cowan come forward? Chase is a fourth grade student at Heard-Mixon Elementary School, and his winning artwork depicted the theme, "Give Space Heaters Some Space." Things placed too close to space heaters can catch on fire. Chase's picture was featured during the month of January. Congratulations, Chase. Next, would Emmanuel Rangel come forward? Emmanuel is a fourth grade student at Heard-Mixon Elementary School, and his artwork, which was featured in February, showcased the tip, "Firefighters Are Your Friends. Never Hide Inside. Always Go Outside When There Is A Fire." Congratulations, Emmanuel. It's important to note that only 13 winners were selected statewide to be featured in the state fire safety calendar, and Newton County schools had two of those winners. Let's congratulate Chase and Emmanuel one more time. Thank you for representing our school system so very well, Chase and Emmanuel. Next, we'll recognize members of the Newton County Theme School Math Team for their outstanding performance at the Griffin-Risa Regional Mathematics Competition. The Newton County Theme School Math Team took home top honors in the Division One Regional Math, Regional Middle School Math Contest, where they competed against other middle school teams from Butts, Fayette, Henry, Lamar, Pike, Spalding, and Upson Counties. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mrs. Henderson Baker. Emma Grace Lumpkin. Emma Grace is an eighth grade student at Newton County Theme School, and she is a member of the winning math team. Congratulations, Emma Grace. Huda Asker. Huda is an eighth grader at Newton County Theme School, and she too is a member of the school's winning math team. Congratulations, Huda. Noah Carter. Noah is an eighth grade student at Newton County Theme School and a member of the winning math team. Congratulations, Noah. Charlotte Thompson. Charlotte is in the eighth grade at Newton County Theme School, and she is also a member of the winning regional math team. Congratulations, Charlotte. Caleb Ekinem. Caleb is an eighth grade student at Newton County Theme School, and tonight he is accepting not one, but two certificates of recognition. In addition to being a member of the winning team at the regional math contest, Caleb also won third place honors in the individual competition. Congratulations, Caleb. Finally, if you all would indulge me one more time and congratulate the Newton County Theme School Middle School Math Team one more time for their prestigious win. Our final group of students all won awards at the Griffin-Risa Regional Literacy Days Competition, where they participated in events such as the poetry recitation contest, the ready writing contest, and the drama team competition. Overall, 15 Newton County School System students brought home awards from the competition. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate from Mrs. Henderson Baker. Amaya Williams. Amaya is an eighth grade student at Newton County Theme School, and she won third place in the poetry recitation contest with her performance of "Why Am I Not Good Enough?" Congratulations, Amaya. Ashlyn Harwood. Ashlyn is a third grade student at Mansfield Elementary School, and she won first place in the regional ready writing competition. Congratulations, Ashlyn. Annalee Parker. Annalee is a seventh grade student at Newton County Theme School, and she won third place in the regional ready writing competition. Congratulations, Annalee. In addition to our poetry recitation and ready writing winners, Newton County School System also sent two drama teams to the regional competition, and they both came home with awards. First up, the team from Live Oak Elementary School won second place with their performance of "The Whiz With A Twist." Team members, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. Brianna Dennis. Brianna is a fifth grade student at Live Oak. Congratulations, Brianna. Peyton Eliza. Peyton is a fifth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School. Congratulations, Peyton. Jacoby Hart. Jacoby is a fifth grader at Live Oak Elementary School as well. Congratulations, Jacoby. Samuel Holder. Samuel is a fifth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School as well. Congratulations, Samuel. Hannah Humphries. Hannah is a fifth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School. Congratulations, Hannah. Dominic Montfort. Dominic is a fifth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School. Congratulations to Dominic. Simone Pierre. Simone is a fifth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School. Congratulations, Simone. Madison Stubbs. Madison is a fifth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School. Congratulations, Madison. Natalie Thomas. Natalie is a fifth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School as well. Congratulations, Natalie. Kamar West. Kamar is a fifth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School. Congratulations, Kamar. Clements Middle School also participated in the regional drama competition, and their team won second place with their presentation of "Lost Voices." The team was comprised of two students. Would Jaden Robinson and Sanaya Hogan come forward? Jaden and Sanaya are both eighth grade students at Clements Middle School. Congratulations to you both on a job well done. Finally, let's congratulate all of our literacy day winners for their outstanding performance at the regional competition. Congratulations to everyone. I'm so very proud of all of you, from the math team, to the fire poster contest, to the literacy day winners, to our drama teams. Congratulations to all of you. You make us so very proud. You are the reason that we do this work, so that you have the opportunity to show just what you're made of, not only in our school system, but across the region as well. So, we are so very proud of you. I'd also like to recognize and thank our school leaders who are here this evening. If you are a school leader, would you please stand? Thank you so much. Thank you all so much for being here. It is the leaders of our schools that make, create the environments that allow our students to flourish and grow, and I'm so grateful that you are here this evening. Ms. Henderson Baker, this concludes tonight's recognition.
Thank you, Mrs. Fury. Again, to reiterate what she said, congratulations to all the students. It's an awesome job that you guys are able to perform academically up under pressure, because that is pressure. When a math team, you have to compete. The literacy days, you're doing things aloud, oratorically, in front of people. The drama team, the same thing. And then our fire safety students, you know, putting your talents out there. So, thank you so much for that, and congratulations to all of you guys. So, you guys are off to a great start in your academic years. I would like for the parents, the aunts, the uncles, the siblings, the grandparents, whoever came out to support these students, to please stand. Thank you guys as well. And look, our smallest students standing up, giving them a standing ovation. So, they're ahead of the game, because I was going to ask you guys to turn around and look at your support system, the people that came out to see you. These are the people that are going to be your cheerleaders for the rest of your life, and I want you to remember that. And we truly thank them for being a village, because it does take a village to educate a child. So, we're only half of it. You guys are the remaining half, and actually you started off. So, thank you for starting the students off in a great way, so that they can excel in our school system, and thank you for all that you do. So, now we've come to a point in our meeting where we would love for you guys to absolutely stay. So, I'm not kicking you out, because we would love for you to stay. However, I do know that students have, as they start whispering to each other already, I do know that they have homework, and some of them have very rigorous classes. If you do need to leave, this is the moment that you would do so while we change into the rest, the remainder of our meeting. However, if you will stay, then we'll certainly appreciate it. Okay. We'll go ahead and continue public participation. Ms. Guthrie, we don't have any. Okay, very good. May I have? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, then moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Superintendent's reports. Dr. Barr?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, good evening.
Good evening.
In the financial report, a couple of items to report to you. The special purpose local option for education sales tax, East Plus Five Distribution for January was $1,107,493, which is a decrease of $242,839 from the previous month. The title Ad Valorem TAVT Collection for January was $488,674. And finally, expenditures are within budget, with 63.29% of funds expended and 66.67% of the year complete. And the financial statement is there for your review.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Does anybody have any questions about the financial report to Dr. Barr? Okay, strategic plan report?
In the strategic plan report, student in the student achievement and success goal area, on February 27th, 2020, Newton County School System students and personnel participated in a digital learning day. On this day, teachers were encouraged to use Canvas, Discovery Education, G Suite for Education, and Microsoft Tools, and other forms of instructional technology to improve teaching and learning. In high-quality workforce goal area, our NCSS Special Education Lead Teachers recently provided training for special education administrators, which focused on master scheduling and best practices for creating a cohesive scheduling team to best meet the needs of special education students. In the climate, culture, and communication goal area, item one, personnel who worked to implement the functions of the NCSS Book Bus in partnership with members of the Newton Education Foundation were awarded a $10,000 grant through the Golden Grant through McDonald's. State Representatives and Georgia Governor Kemp took part in the grant reception. Item three, youth mental health first aid training was held in February at West Newton Elementary School. In total, 13 staff members, including MTSF specialists, were certified as youth mental health first aid, aiders. And finally, in the organizational and operational effectiveness goal area, in February, representatives from the Newton County Fire Services Division provided fire safety training for lead custodians and other operations division personnel. And that is the superintendent's report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Does anybody have any questions about the superintendent's report? I do have a question, Dr. Barr. It's on the culture, climate, and communication, the item number three that you mentioned on the youth mental health first aid. And you may not know the numbers to it, but how often is that given, like, to employees coming in, like, throughout the year? Do we have a set schedule?
I do not know, but I will get you the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, like, employees coming in?
Yes, ma'am.
That are interested or being oriented and have the opportunity to go to it. Okay, thank you. All right. Enrollment report?
In the enrollment report, we have 19,390 students currently enrolled, as compared to March 2019, where there was an enrollment of 19,729. And that concludes the enrollment report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the enrollment? Okay, thank you. No old business, moving on to new business?
In item A, the superintendent recommends permitting N-Plan Roth conversions within the Newton County School System Retirement Savings Plan, and amending the plan to implement hardship distribution provisions of the Bipartisan Budget Act of 2018. The plan and the hardship amendment should be adopted before March 30, 2020, in order to be compliant with IRS regulations, which provide the protection of using a pre-approved plan document and adoption agreement. And this recommendation is aligned with strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and strategic goal area three, high-quality workforce. And that is item A.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on A? Okay, item B?
Excuse me.
Oh, back up.
We have to approve this before the deadline date, March 30th, all right?
You're okay to hold till next time.
Till next week.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson. I should have stated that the only item for action tonight is E. Okay, item B?
In item B, the superintendent recommends the student agendas needed for the school system be purchased from School Datebooks Incorporated of Lafayette, Indiana. The total cost is $58,532.63. The school system will utilize a contract managed by the National Buy Board, a national purchasing cooperative established in part by the National School Boards Association, to purchase the agenda. Their cost includes delivery to all locations. This is related to strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and the funding source is the FY 2021 General Fund, and upon approval, out of function, 2100 Object 610. That is item B.
Okay, any questions about item B?
I've got one. Is this all student handbooks for the entire school system?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The same company?
Same company, same size, everything's same.
So, that's my question about the size, because I talked to y'all before about the size of this handbook, and how secondary students really don't utilize it. But I know we have to have a way to get out the handbook, the rules, and for them to sign and stuff like that. I'm just wondering if we were to make it smaller and take out the dates and stuff, it would be cheaper cost. But I guess not.
Take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a digital version?
They got to sign for it?
That's, that's the piece, ma'am.
So, there's not a digital form?
There's a digital, it's posted online, but they, we have to have a record of them receiving it. We've got forms within it that have to be signed and returned.
Man, I scroll down and hit okay to everything. Can't put that on there? I agree.
We could, but then we've got to accommodate for every student who may or may not have such access.
Computer access. But even with, so, the purpose of the signing is them acknowledging that they receive, that they know the rules, that the parents know the rules as well, because the parent has to sign it as well. There's not another way? I'm going to say this every year. I just feel like it's a lot. So, there's not a, another way?
Can we, when we, excuse me, when we get the recognition that they've got it, can we have a provision in there that, and let them know we have a digital format on it as well?
Okay, yes, ma'am. We can look at that.
Or just have access to it.
We, we've looked at it 100, I think, many, many times, and we can go back and start, try it again, but it winds up costing us more money to do it the other ways. So, we try, we actually tried.
The print?
Yes. You would be surprised how much it costs to make the copies. I think we tried it, we got the, all those figures one year, and we also tried to, we had that Remage machine up there where we were trying to put it on CDs, so that we could pass out CDs. I mean, we've, we've, we've done, this is probably the most efficient way, unless you're going to redesign the whole thing and then just do like a pamphlet that goes out.
No, I think what we're saying is just to have access to that digital version, so that, you know, they don't necessarily, yes, we're going to have to give them a hard copy regardless, but I think just making sure we advertise there's a digital version online.
There's one.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Barr. Next item, because you have up to D, C?
C, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy. And that relates to strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. That concludes item C.
Okay, any questions on C? Item D?
In item D, the superintendent recommends the contract for painting services at select schools be awarded to A&amp;D Painting Incorporated of Tucker, Georgia, and Surtur Pro Painters of Athens, Georgia. The total contract value is $181,880. The schools include, the schools to be painted include Flint Hill Elementary School, Oak Hill Elementary School, and West Newton. The project consists of painting in both interior and exterior of the buildings, including the gymnasiums, as well as pressure washing exterior building surfaces, including canopies, columns, and sidewalks. Upon approval, the project is scheduled to begin on May 28, 2020, and is expected to be completed before the start of the next school year. Seven vendors participated in the solicitation process, and the winning vendors and their prices are presented there for your review. This deals with strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and the funding source is the FY 2020, and upon approval, FY 2021 General Fund, function 2600, object 430. And that is item D, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any questions for item D? I do have a question. Were it, the vendors that were selected, were any of them the vendors from the Alcovee project?
A&amp;D, I can't remember. A&amp;D, Alcovee, yes, ma'am.
A&amp;D?
Yes, ma'am.
So, they were satisfactory, because they're getting two bids?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Item E?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends approval of personnel items as outlined in executive session.
Okay. May I have a motion for item E?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, thank you. Other matters of interest?
Just me? Yeah, if that's okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, in case you are not aware, there are many issues across our country and in our state related to a very new virus called the coronavirus, or COVID-19, and I think that it's even been renamed in the last few days as well. And just to give everyone a quick summary of the things that are in place to help protect the safety, the health, and the well-being of our students and our staff members. We have a team of folks at the board office who have spent time working with the health department. We get lots of information from the Center for Disease Control, the Department of Public Health, and then, of course, we have a very healthy partnership with our local health department. And of course, we, we are not the medical professionals, so we listen to their direction and their guidance. And those types of updates come out to me and to others pretty regularly, providing us with information and things that we need to be thinking about or considering. And our team has spent the better part of the last 10 days making sure that all of our processes were up to snuff and in place. For example, we already have a process for managing communicable diseases, and the process that we already have in place would be the same process we would use for any other, any other, the coronavirus, the same exact process. And we have heightened our cleaning processes, so we're working on ensuring that our touching place, the places that are most frequently touched are cleaned regularly, like doorknobs, and on the school buses, the tops of the seats, the handles going down, the railings on the school buses, places that people spend a lot of time putting their hands. We're also making sure that students wash their hands, and staff members, we're encouraging everyone to wash their hands. And in the absence of good hand washing, use hand sanitizer, which we have some in our schools, but if you have been to the store to try to buy hand sanitizer, you will find that there has been a run on it, and there, it's almost impossible to, to find hand sanitizer. The other side of that equation, so we're working to make sure that all of our processes are in place, and that our teams of people from the district office, our school leaders, our teaching staffs, our central office administrators. As a matter of fact, we had a meeting today with the staff members who work here to ensure that everyone is clear about process and protocol, so that when parents call, we can reassure them that we're doing everything that we can within the structures provided to us by the Centers for Disease Control, Department of Public Health, and the, our local health department. So, we're in constant communication. We also have the benefit of having a lead nurse in this building who works with our school nurses. So, anytime that we have information, she's communicating that back and forth to our school nurses and to our, and to our principals. On the other side of the house, you know, thinking long-term, what would happen if there was a school closure that we had to put in place due to the fact that somebody would, we found out that someone had the coronavirus? The same process that would happen would be the exact same process that would happen during a snow closure, for example. We would shut the school down. However, we would do some cleaning processes within the building to ensure that all of those touching surfaces would get an extra once over. We would not make that decision, though, by ourselves. We would work in concert with the health department, and the process would probably look something like this. A student would come to school, or a staff member might come to school, and they might not feel well. We would do what we would do any other time that someone was not feeling well, direct them to the school nurse. The school nurse would make an assessment of the student, most likely the student, and then determine whether or not the parent, a parent needed to come pick up that child. From there, the parent would then either take them to the doctor or or to be diagnosed. And the coronavirus mimics the flu and allergies as well. So, the medical doctor would then do the testing that he or she needed to take care of, whatever he or she felt was necessary. From there, there is a process that they must follow in reporting. So, if that, if it comes back as the flu, then that's the flu. If it came back positive for the coronavirus, they would have to notify the persons in the Department of Public Health. And then they would notify us, and then our process would go into play, where we would begin the closing down process, if directed by the Health Department, and in concert with the Health Department. Then, we would begin to think about how long we would need to keep our school closed, school or schools closed. And in the interim, the curriculum and instruction team is working, and has been working, to develop a plan of continuing student education. Now, we all know that there's nothing like being in a classroom with teachers and having a high-quality teacher in front of you, but we're putting in place processes that accommodate students who can access the content online, as well as students who may not be able to access the content online. And we are working to ensure that all of those pieces are in place. I don't know what the extent of time would be, that we might have a school closure, maybe a day, it could be a day, it could be two weeks. I don't know. But we're planning for the very worst and hoping for the very best. And as always, the safety, the health, and the well-being of our students and staff is our number-one concern. And we would never, under any circumstance, not reveal any information that we have, because there has been information circulated that we have, we have had people diagnosed with the coronavirus. That is not accurate, that is untrue. If that were to happen in our schools, we would notify our families, our board, and our families and our community immediately, because that's just the right thing to do. We would want to protect our children and our staff members as soon as we know something, or something is reported to us. But I think our processes are pretty good. This is nothing that we've ever dealt with before. We've not had the scare that you're experiencing across our country, in our state. We are looking at field trips and identifying field trips that are within the state, and then field trips that go outside of the state. And then, we also have international field trips, and we're putting some structures in place to ensure that, again, even on school system-sponsored field trips, we want to make sure that our children are safe, and their safety and their health and well-being is our number-one priority. So, it's not likely that we would approve a field trip going to a state that has a state of emergency declared due to the coronavirus, whether there was one case in that state or 100 cases in that state. Not unlike international travel. If there was a field trip going to a country that has been closed down to travel, obviously, we would not allow that field trip to take place. But we want to make sure that we look at each of the trips and consider them one at a time, because there are some field trips that are taking place during the month of June. And I kind of feel like it's, might be a little premature to call it now. So, we're looking at field trips that take place from now until graduation, till the May 22nd. What are we doing with those field trips? Is it okay to be in town and local? Yes, until there's a state of emergency declared in Georgia. And then, we would want to rescind those field trips as well. So, we are working hard to look at every aspect and consider every angle so that our families feel comfortable with the work that we're doing and knowing that we would never put anybody in jeopardy, whether they're in our schools or they're traveling on a field trip. We will make the best decisions for our students. So, I just wanted to make sure that we said that publicly so that everyone understands that there are plans in place, many of which already existed, just the time to operate, to put them operational has arrived, unfortunately. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other matters of interest? Tomorrow, we have training, you guys, don't forget. Don't forget. So, we have whole board training tomorrow in Griffin at 9:00. So, and then, my other, only other announcement is crossover day is Thursday. Yeah, so crossover, watching it very carefully. We have a couple of things out there in regards to the Tim Tebow again, Bill, and one about college and career academies with online students being counted and can come, so.
And vouchers?
Yeah. I think it passed today.
Did it?
I think so. I got to look at the count.
I haven't seen.
Yeah, I think it did. Yeah, I think it passed today. I have to look.
I didn't, I saw something about it.
I was trying to look it up now, so, but I think it passed. I mean, we hope it didn't, but I think it did. So, but it'll have to go to the other chamber, so maybe it'll get caught up there, so. All right, you guys. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Send me.
Okay, moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, media adjourned, 7:38 PM. Yeah, I was trying to look that up. I think it passed.
I saw Renee Unterman up there and the Lieutenant Governor celebrating her, so.
Oh, it passed, yeah. Because she sponsored it.
I did too, but.
Yeah, call me on this phone, yeah.
Hello, how you doing? Very good.